Akama, welcome to another week of study session where aspiring chemites, beginner chemites, initiated chemites, chemists of all varieties can come together to study, read, you know, just different literature about the comedic legacy, read the mythos and so on and so forth. And just kind of share space together. So we are going to continue the book that we have been reading. Hopefully we will be almost done. Like, look how we have such little left. So we're doing good. Akama, out and on today, actually. So we're going to pick up where we've, actually technically where we've already started. So we are in the third chapter, Genetic Linguistic Connections: Ancient Egypt and Black Africa. And again, this is the book Ancient Egypt and Black Africa by Theophile Obenga. There I go. So. Dua. So. Let's start. Let us take another inherited word just as difficult to borrow from another language, the word mouth. One speaks, eats, drinks with one's mouth. So in Akkadian, it is pu. In. Or Gothic, it's just the letter p, so I guess it's. Hebrew, peh. Phoenician, huh. Arabic, fam, plural, afam, or fam. So in Seshmetu Netcher, it is ra, Coptic ra. Berber, imi. Is ami. Zenga is imi. And Ethiopian is af. So that is difficult to reason out and suppose common root for all the Semitic. Seshmetu Netcher and Berber forms, it's obvious. It is only necessary to open one's eyes. On the other hand, Pharaonic Seshmetu Netcher and Coptic are well and truly Black African in the broad context. So if we were to take those and compare them to. So again, he starts out with Seshmetu Netcher, with ra, Coptic ra. Ikiri. No, is si, kiri, from Nigeria would be aru. Bozo would be lo. Kapele would be la. Sarcola, from Mali, la. Busa, le, goro, le. Ndemeli, from Congo, it would be lu. So, a name is a universal cultural phenomenon that identifies the one who carries it. And so differentiates one from other individuals. Also, on this point, there is no Hamitosemitic or Afro-Asiatic cultural linguistic universe. So Akkadian, sumu. Uggaric is sem. Hebrew, sem. Aramaic, sum or shum. Ethiopian, sem. Arabic, issem. But when it comes to Seshmetu Netcher, it would be ren, meaning name. Coptic, ran, ren, lan, len, rin. So. So he got all of them. And again, I know it's backwards. I'm sorry. So these are the Akkadians. These ones are the ancient comedic and Coptic. And I keep saying ancient comedic just because I'm reading what he's saying. So the Plato, oh my lord. See, this is when it gets all super technical and Miniet be like. Vocab, we need to like underline and Google what some of these words even mean. So. Plato, alveolar, fricative consonant. I'm like, this is how you know this book is definitely for scholars. This is for people who know nowadays stuff. Because I don't even know what that means, honestly. But whatever kind of consonant that is in Akkadian. Uggaric, Hebrew, Aramaic disappears in Arabic and Ethiopian. Berber. I'm like looking. The Berber says ism, asim, meaning name. But then I see that that one is like similar to the Arabic. So it is virtually impossible to find a predialectal form common to Semitic and. Seshmetu Netcher for this term, which can only be inherited. Therefore, where is the reality when it comes to analyzable evidence of the Homo Semitic family or Afro-Asiatic family? On the other hand, Seshmetu Netcher obviously connects with other Black African languages. So he has languages from Sudan. Adamawa. So that's Galke, Purimi, Ngumi, Panjama, Mbey, Bantu, Fanti and Ashanti. So all of those you've got in Seshmetu Netcher, ren. But then in Coptic, ran, ren, lan, len, rin. In the Sudan, rin. In the Adamawa would be rin, 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 len, rinna, lina, dina, inna, jina, zina. Oof. I'm like, I know there's a certain way I'm supposed to say it in Fanti, but. I'm not gonna necessarily pronounce it correctly, but it's dzin. So dzin. I am trying. And then Ashanti is din. So I, you know, it all kind of has that similar sound to it. Even if relations are often obscure between the following words, they are nevertheless related. And for that reason, point back to a common origin. So. Okay, now I'm being nosy. I'm like going ahead. So in Latin, it would be nomen for name. Sanskrit would be nama. Vasic would be nama. Gothic, namo. Hittites, laman, Welsh, innu. Ancient Irish, anim. Old Slav, ime. Old Prussian, emens. Albanian, emer or emen. Armenian, anun. Takaran would be nom. And Greek, honama or hoonama. So the families are also distinct. So then he has it with Semitic, Indo-European, Afro-Semitic. And then he puts them all together, the ones that are the same. So the Semitic ones all pretty much start with. Samum, samum, shamum, etc. Then the Indo-Europeans are nomen, nom, name, nama, etc. And then Afro-Semitic would be ren, ran, ren, len, rin, rana. Or is it rinna? R-I-N-A, etc. So he's pretty much just grouping them all together. So where is the Homo Semitic or Afro-Asiatic in the above mentioned examples? One can confirm that the Afro-Asiatic family is evidently a scientific fraud, which he said last week. And I was like, ooh, all the shade because there'd be a lot of people mad about that. One can confirm that the Afro-Asiatic family is evidently a scientific fraud. One must consequently rid African linguistics of this fake family, which cannot be reconstructed from relevant evidence. So he illustrates again, Hebrew, Arabic, South Arabic, Berber, comedic and Coptic. So for the word house, Hebrew and Arabic have biets, bits, and by it again. Berber would be tegemi. And in Seshmetu Netcher, it's per, which is house, or Coptic, per. So the other Black African languages say, in Wolaf would be per. In Loco would be peray. In Mende would be peray. Kapele would be the same. Loma would be pele. Mofu, uzam and zedim is all ver, B-E-R. So it, you know, all kind of has the same. So then finally. Where is the pertinence of Homo Semitic or Afro-Asiatic with the group of words, which is only used in the imperative? So to take. So Akkadian, Arabic, Ethiopian, Berber, Seshmetu Netcher and Coptic, he has sabat, hut, yaz, amez, mi and mo. So once more, the Seshmetu Netcher belongs to the whole family of Black African languages, simply because to take in Seshmetu Netcher, or Ronnie Kemet, you know, if you're just speaking, would be mi, Coptic mo, Yoruba mu, banda mi, and Bantu ma. And fang from Gabon would be meh. So see the word black in Arabic, aswad. In Berber. Is stiff, delu and be. This is, oh my gosh. It's B-E-K-H-K-H. That's a lot of K's and H's. The Ken. I don't even know how to pronounce that, the Kenan. But in Seshmetu Netcher, it would be kem, or Coptic kame, kemmy, kam, kem. So this connects with other languages. The Congo, ikama. Bambara, kami, mosi, kim. In Liberia, you've got the Vi language, kambu. And in the language, yaku, kaumpu. So with the words like black, take house, name, mouth, earth, country, region, sun, and so many others, it is proved radically impossible in strict historical linguistic terms, which are comparable and inductive, to find common roots between Semitic languages, Akkadian, Urgaric, Hebrew, Arabic, Ethiopian, and Ronnie Kemet or Seshmetu Netcher for writing it. So, and he goes even further to say between the actual classic language, as well as Demotic and Coptic. So he kind of makes that distinction. So. Oh, and then he expands and says, and the Berber dialects. Gademes, refianturig, kabale, etc. Such possible common roots would be reconstructed, which could be validly called Afro-Asiatic or Homo Semitic. That is to say, a linguistic family which would unite African languages and the languages of Asia or the Near East under one group. Well, it is absolutely impossible to reconstruct such original roots from inherited words. So all things well considered of Homo Semitic or Afro-Asiatic family cannot be reconstructed from relevant evidence and so does not exist. Those who want to impose this unreal linguistic family at all costs are manifestly committing an intellectual swindle. But what finally is the significance of all this? One can only interpret this as the champions of the Afro-Asiatic want to play or to cheat with history. So one, they want to put the ancient world of the Jewish people, the Hebrews, and the Pharaonic world of the Hopi Valley, or the Now Valley, on an equal footing. Although we know that the Hebrews created no significant contribution to the development of the civilization in antiquity, except in religion, for which ancient Kemet is owed a tremendous debt. After all, this is number two. After all, they want to cut the Pharaonic world from the Black African cultural universe by wrongly preaching, obviously that the language which supports the Pharaonic civilization has nothing in common with the languages spoke, I said splo, spoken today by Black Africans. Therefore, logically, the Pharaonic cultural linguistic world does not belong to the Black African world as a whole. Afro-Asiatic is a mere myth that must be destroyed. Oh. I know some folks like, would be very, very upset. So some morphological correspondences between Seshmetu Netcher and Black African languages. We have completed a rather detailed work regarding all the, I'm like, I see the hearts, dua. We have completed a rather detailed work regarding the fundamental aspects of the common grammatical and formal structures between Seshmetu Netcher and the Black African languages. Here, we would only like to emphasize a few unarguable and precise facts. There is a most remarkable correlation, a very close similarity, between the third person singular of Seshmetu Netcher and the Wolaf's suffix pronoun, both masculine and feminine. So ancients. I keep saying this. In Seshmetu Netcher. And in Wolaf, the third person is plural. So the Wolaf is closer to Pharaonic Seshmetu Netcher, Ronnie Kemet, than it is to Coptic itself. So, oh, because they, they, they share the same rules. So this similarity concerns a specific point peculiar, yeah, peculiar to Seshmetu Netcher and Wolaf morphology. Let's note what follows. So. In Seshmetu Netcher, mer would be to love, to desire. Coptic would be mare, marie, mili, mi, me. Maite or maite and mi. In different Neolithic languages, it would be maro, mer, mar. From northeastern Zaire would be omu or omu. And Wolaf, mar. In Hebrew, it would be hab. Arabic, hab. Habba. Because I'm like, I know Habibi has something to do with love. Yeah. So furthermore, the Coptic, which is Seshmetu Netcher, or Ronnie Kemet vocalized and evolved, and the Mabara, Mali languages, present similar verbal forms. So in Coptic. E nadi, I will give. In Bambara, it would be e nadi. So they're using different like accent marks and things. But essentially, it would be like said the same. So nanadi, we will give. Anadi, they will give. So that's Coptic. And then Bambara, from West Africa. And then au nadi, he, she will give. Au nadi, he, she will give. So again, the same thing. They're just put like, the accent would be in different areas. So I'm like, the way I'm reading it is like in my brain, I'm thinking of it like, kind of like how we have dialects, where, you know, if I'm down south, they're going to pronounce words one way. But up north, they would pronounce it a different way. But out west or in the Midwest, it would be pronounced, you know, differently yet again. So that's the way I'm like reading those. Because it literally is like apostrophes and stuff on that side. And then they change it to like that long sound over the A, like over the vowels, essentially is where I'm seeing a lot of that. So the functional element. In Seshmetu Netcher, sound of n. In Coptic na and in Bambara na, Wolaf on expressly indicates the future. One finds the same functional na everywhere in the field of Black African languages. For example, out of Uganda. So. Nannebi, I will be. That's from Bambara to Luganda. Nanaba, I will be. Inabi, you will be. Onabi, you will be. Anabe, he, she will. Anaba, he, she will. Wait, he, she will be. Sorry. So. I, you know, I'm not going to lie. I've heard people like compare them over the years. And I never really quite understood until this chapter, like what the significance was of that. Just because I'm like, okay, well, just because it sounds the same, like, so what? But it does make sense, like as a scholar, that if everyone is kind of saying words similarly, or using certain ways of pronouncing words and things like that, that it makes sense that in reconstructing the languages, that now comparing it with all these other languages on the continent would give more clues than these Asian. Languages. I'll leave it at that. So I think the other thing that's very, very interesting is that if this is the case with language. So like as chemites, right? You know, a lot of people, I don't want to necessarily say debate, because you know, there's different. There's many different groups of people who say that they're chemites. There are some people who are initiated. There's some people who self-identify. There's some people who follow people on social media and say, you know, I dig what they're talking about. And then like, so I'm comedic too. And like, that's it. But. I say that to say, I have been in groups before where. There are a lot of people who like really try to push Buddhism and really try to push like, you know, some stuff that I know comes from. Like the Hindu world and, you know, even still, like with us, when I say us, I mean, you know, people who are comedic, wherever. We do tend to still bring the Abrahamic way of doing things into it. So my point, I guess, that I'm trying to get at is if with the languages, we stay comparing. You know, just this is how words were said. This is how we should understand it, da, 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 da. Why wouldn't we do that with? Other areas too? You know what I'm saying? Like, why wouldn't we? Equate them to other African religions, spiritual systems, so on and so forth. And I'm not saying that some people don't, because there are a good amount of people who do do that. But, you know, I'm, I'm thinking more like for the beginners. Like, you know, how could we as a community kind of like? Chill on that. You know, because I, and again, I know I've said this before and I'm not, you know, trying to be disrespectful or anything, because you know, I understand things at different time periods. And you know, you use what you have access to. So I get that. But I guess like now in 2021, where it's like, okay, well, we have access and understanding to way more stuff. So like, so we shouldn't just, you know, keep substituting like, oh, well, you know, the stuff in ancient Kemet was lost. So like, I'm going to use this dope om chant. Like, you know, I've heard a lot of people do stuff like that. And it's just like. If it works for the language, like, why not do that? Like, why, why substitute things that, you know. Don't have that. What is the word that he uses? Like the common origin. I can't think of the actual word he uses. But like, you know, something that is like kind of way more similar. And, you know, it would take a little more work because, you know, people aren't super, super familiar. I think maybe in 2021, more people are more familiar with African religion, spiritual systems and so on and so forth. But. You know, it's, it's not like. I don't know, still acceptable. I guess that's the way I'd, I'd say that. You know, it's still kind of like hush, hush and oh my gosh, kind of taboo. That's the word I'm looking for. Like, it's still considered kind of like taboo. So I guess I'll throw that out to you all. What do you all think? Like, if we are in the vision of trying to reconstruct, trying to understand. You know, what are some things that maybe come from other systems that we might need to reevaluate? Or maybe kind of shift the way we look at the comedic legacy overall? Because again, if it works for the language of looking within the interior of Africa, why, why look all the way over to Asia? You know, so I'm like, feel free. So I'm gonna go ahead. There is another, and I'm like, but if y'all say something, I'm gonna jump back on that. So there is another Pharaonic particle to indicate explicitly the future ka in the form sejim kaef, he who will, I'm sorry, not he who. He will hear is mostly encountered in religious texts and inscriptions in temples. Ha ka sen ma sen tu. They will certainly rejoice when they see you. Pari ka hopi, or pets. Hopi, the flood of the Hopi River. Will rise to the sky. I'm like, oof. If the Hopi rose to the sky, like, I know that's a good thing. That's like kind of a scary thing, but that's like a good thing. So in Hausa, we have ka, whose use is above all, confined to the poetic. And then he, oh, okay. So then he's referencing Hausa grammar book. So page thirty-six is like where he's making that connection. So in Bagarmin, the particle ka is also used to indicate the future. Imala katad. I was about to say tada. Oh my gosh. See what happens when you go too fast? Imala katad. You will make yourself. I. You, tada, to do. Ni katad, he will do. Nay, he or him. In fang, the immediate and distant future is expressed with the element ki. Mi ki so akiri. I am coming tomorrow. Mi, I or me. So, to come, to arrive. Akiri tomorrow or kiri just morning. In kimbutu, it is a particle ka, which is used to form the distant future. Imi ngakalanda. Oh, I like this one. I will do the shopping. Let me stop. So in Bambara, after the verb be, to be, the particle ka is used to translate various tenses of the verb, among which is the future min, min, eh, min bi ka ni ki. The one who will do this. Min, the one who, nin, this, that it, ki, to do. So the constructs which indicate the future. Biya ka lun ka i ka. For the immediate future, one uses construction i ka. Ai ka linder. He will rejoice. How could Hausa borrow the ka from kimbutu or mbichi? How could Bambara borrow the ka from Seshmetu Netcher? How could fang borrow the ki from buguriman? According to the method and operation, there is the link of origin. And then he goes through all of those places and he lists them. So they all essentially kind of like look the same or have like the same or similar. Expression. So in Seshmetu Netcher, there is only one way of translating the negative imperative. We use m. So from the verb imi, itself a negative verb. And he's referencing the Gardner Grammar Reference Book. Here are some samples of ear, to make, emir, literally the m and then ir, don't make. Sined, be afraid. M sined, do not be afraid. Emrendi, kit, mset, ket. Do not substitute this for that other. So this negative imperative of Pharaonic Seshmetu Netcher, m is singular pertinent fact, almost idiomatic. In Yoruba, the negative form ma is also used to form grammatically the negative imperative. The negative of the simple form of the command is formed by placing the particle ma before the verb. And then he references learning, a learning Yoruba book. So in Pharaonic Kemet, as in Yoruba. M or ma is a particle employed solely and exclusively for negative imperative. So this is like, that reminds me of, and I'm like, I'm sorry that I'm referencing European languages, just because when I'm, you know, like when we're in school, that's the languages, they generally give us options to take. So, but I know like when it's in French, if it's something that's negative, it'll be like. N in front of it. So like. N in front of it. So, like, don't you get it in a spa? Like, you get it? Uh, but it's always like you put the negative first. So like, when I'm reading this, I'm like, oh, it's kinda like the same way. Like, not only the way you're writing it, but like you have a specific thing and every time you see that before something. You know that it's like a negative, like, so what it's saying, it's like, yeah, the opposite of everything that comes after this, kind of a situation. So. Like, where did I go? See, now I started moving the book. Uh, this is a typical singular pertinent encounter, for it is the same phonetic reality, some morphology, some same syntax. Uh, there is therefore a thoroughly ta- a thorough tally of forms between. Uh, Pharonic Sashmetu Nacher and Yoruba. Uh, the linking particles are grammatical uh. Signifieds. I don't know why I was gonna read signifieds. Are grammatical signifieds. Which establish specific relations. From the ideas of Ferdinand Sisser. Uh, it could be said that linking particles express a host of connections. As grammatical and lexicological means simultaneously, linking particles, conjunctions, prepositions, et cetera. Are invariably words which connect juxtaposed elements in a sentence. They bring nuance or precision of meaning and interrelate. With an ensemble of other elements linked together to express synta- uh syntactical. And grammatical relationships. Usually, the linking particle is a consonant followed by a vowel. The psychological grammatical mechanism of the relationship in Sashmetu Nacher and Coptic is affected. With the same linguistic tools, the same signifieds. And particles as the mechanisms in black African languages. So here are some examples. So he always, or as he's been doing. He starts with Sashmetu Nacher, m, so within, out of, by means of, like, as, in, when. While, at the time that, and then Coptic. Mo, inside, during, of, out of, by means of. In these premises, within this place. So then he goes into Neolithic. Laguna, Sena, Soyobia, Zulu, Ronga. Sinefu Hausa. Bambara and Berber. And then he ends with Arabic for comparison. So when he puts all of them. You notice that they all, you know, they still all fit that same rule that he's been talking about, like. They all relatively like me, ma, ma, mu, mu, mo, omo. Ma, uma, like, it's it's all kinda the same. Uh, so then he gives another example, uh, ar, towards, arrow. Towards, and that's Sashmetu Nacher, and then Coptic. And then Bambara, um, Mangbetu, Nuwer, Songhai from Niger, Azir from. Medieval. And then he has Arabic again for the, you know, comparison. But all of that is. Um, arrow, er, ra, ro, ru, re, ra, ra, ri. But then Arabic is illa. Like, it don't sound nothing similar. So the third example he gives, uh, n, for, to, because of, of. Coptic, same thing, different, you know, accent marks for pronunciation. Uh, so. Uh, Badger Minian. It's an Hausa na, sinefo ni, Bambara na. Tgosho na, mapongue ni or na. Is literally a whole lot of letters and only two vowels. See, if I slow down, I got it. Na. Uh, from Burkina Faso, n from Zaire or Congo, na, and Berber is e di et. That's the comparison. So essentially, even though. Wait a minute, never mind. I was, I got the wrong, oh my gosh. I was about to say something and I had to catch myself because I was like, wait a minute, I got two groups of people confused. So, my bad. Uh, the concordance of the three um comedic particles, m, er, n, Coptic. M, mo, arrow, n, or na. With the corresponding ones in modern black African languages confirms. If still necessary, the profound ties of origins between Pharonic, Sashmetu, Nacher, Coptic and Black African are, you know, strong. Facts are facts. He literally says that. Facts are facts. It is not permitted to tamper with the evidence. A profound formal and grammatical link exists between. Um, Sashmetu Nacher and Black African languages. It is only, it is the only legitimate conclusion to draw from facts such as the one uh just delineated. So he was just like, alright, y'all. I am not even messing with you, like. I done gave you all these examples. You cannot deny it. What is that? Uh, my logic is undeniable. That's what he said. Alright, so seven. Examples of uh Pharonic correspondences between Sashmetu Nacher and Black African languages. So when dealing with internal analysis and reduction, there is a need to formulate clear and simple uh phonetic rules. Once they are in place, phonetic analysis is most essential and uh instructive part of comparison. It is a question of establishing rules of phonetic correspondence, so sound laws. Between compared languages. Uh, so phonetic altercation and linguistic changes and transformations are not isolated incidences. They occur quite regularly and we. I'm sorry, and are determined in all cases where the same conditions are realized. Example, in Latin. Uh, P of Saponem persists in Italian Saponé. But changes slightly in the provincial Sabo and even more becoming a fricative in the French Savon. It is the name for the Latin Ripam, which becomes Ribba in provincial. And Rivay in French. We have here a phonetic law. B and V in the series examined. So what was P in one ended up being B in another language and V, but. P, B, like, you know, like when it comes to you saying those things. It doesn't take much for you to like move your mouth like oh so slightly differently and it's kinda like similar. So sometimes the differences which are only surface discrepancies can baffle the uninitiated. So Florum gives fleur. F L E U R, flower. Cantorum gives. Oh, Chanteur, singer. How can one explain the transformations? It is rather simple. The stressed Latin O in an open syllable leads to the French u. So there's a systematic correspondence between English D and German T. So, English would be drink, German would be trinken. Dor in English would be ter in German. English dream. Would be in German, traum. Wait. Okay, so he had me until that last one. That last one kinda threw me off cuz I was like, oh, okay, yeah, they're all kinda like, you could tell. And then that one was like. This is the part where I'm just like, hmm, you smart, okay, whatever you say. Uh, but it is a requisite that reasoning not be started from borrowed words. So Serbo-Croatian words. Penzer, window. Dim, niji, women's clothing, kilm, carpet, et cetera, are Turkish words. And history tells us that Turks colonized the Slavs, Yugoslavians, uh, the Slavs of the south. For almost three and a half centuries. From then on, Serbo-Croatian is not under the influence of the dominant Turkish. So consequently, one must be able to disingwa- uh distinguish. The borrowed words owed to geographical context and not to history from the heritage. Which comes from common original language. Okay, so that makes sense to me also. Where, you know, like, even if we do like family treat, cuz somebody said this to me before too. Where it's this idea that um. You know, they did like ancestry dot com and the point that was being made was just like, okay. It says that you, you know, have these, all these lineages like within you, but it's like. But were those lineages? Like, happening over in, you know, said other country and mixing? Was it a result of slavery? Was it an, uh, you know, was it from the breeding? Cuz you know, some of us are. Products of people who were born, you know, in those breeding farms or like, was it a matter of? You know, the mixing one we got over here? Did it happen on that side of the ocean, this side of the ocean? Was it, you know, when it came? To, you know, people of other mixes, like, was it um because of sexual exploitation? Was it uh sex workers and, you know, it's for their job? Were they? Uh, prisoners of war, like, you know, how did, how did those things even come about? So it makes sense with language too, where it's like, you know, some of these languages that are here, like. The United States, we were speaking English because. The, you know, the natives were colonized and, you know, so many other groups kind of, um. You know, if we were in different areas, like, I always think it's very interesting when people be like, we're in America, speak English. And I'm like, but. Like, that argument makes sense in the thirteen colonies area, like, if we wanna just be like. Hmm, yay, I'm proud of my colonizer, woo. But like, if I'm in Florida, my colonizer was Spaniards. If I was in Texas, my colonizer was Spaniards. If I'm in California, my colonizer was Spaniards. If I'm out in Chicago, my colonizer were French. So it's just like, so then like, what exactly does that even mean? You know, like even like Creoles down in Louisiana, like, y'all are only there because. France lost the French and Indian War. Otherwise, y'all would be Canadians. You wouldn't even be Americans. Like, you know, it's it's just very interesting. So it's like being able to. Understand the context of why certain things are there, why certain things exist, like, I even saw that on social media. Uh, recently, and they say, you know, all this knowledge and all these years later, but you're still eating, um. You're still eating the oppressor scraps or whatever. It's like talking about soul food and stuff like that. Um, and not just soul food cuz um African American people aren't the only people who, you know, had to eat scraps. Native Americans, you know, depending on where they were, they ate scraps because of the war and stuff like that. Wars plural cuz it was mad wars. We're just gonna talk about them. Um. You know, even like I said, out in California, a lot of the um indigenous people there, you know, who later became mixed and. Form Latino, Latina, Latinx, and so on and so forth. Like, they had to eat scraps. Like, they got some meals within their. Traditions and cultures that are scrap meals too. So, you know, but again, it's like, okay, well, we understand that. This is something that was happening because of historical circumstance. So like. We're not gonna claim that, kind of a thing. So, you know, we could see that with the push of people. Um, you know, not wanting to have Eurocentric names and kinda like changing. You know, their names or making sure they named their um children something that would be more uh ethnically identifiable. Um, which, you know. The long term and short term of that is another conversation for another day. But it's like, I could just see that same theme happening in other places, like, oh, yeah, that makes sense, like. You know, just because I'm not a linguist, um, I can still, you know, see that kinda theme and then, oh, okay, yeah, that makes sense. Um, so, he goes on to uh make these kind of comparisons. So he does. Uh, and Bochi, so that uh ewe is Togo Ghana, or not. It, you know, either country, depending on where you are. Uh, and Bochi in Congo or Central Africa. So he compares the word for armed, dead, character, to burn, to swallow. Uh, so, to swallow me in uh ewe. And in Embochi, it's in in mia. And to burn, me, m e, not m i, to burn would be mia and would be fire. In Embochi. So, you know, he he's saying like, you know. Just like it is for Latin and Italian or Latin and French or, you know, English and German. It's the same kinda rules that also exist within Africa too. So one cannot explain such evidence, even less the borrowing of words. It can only be due to a remote prehistorical link. When we have a series um with the initial D. Like with the word for to eat, uh, which can only be inherited. So then he goes. And he does um men. Shalele, got it. Lunda, Embochi and Yoruba. It's D, 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 dai. D, du, dia. D I A and then D Y A, dia dia, o dia. Kudia, kudi, or kude. Uh, i za, or za, and jet, or je. So, you know, again, we see all those common things where it's like, okay, some of the letters might change. But it still sounds pretty similar. So, that is to say, a series which covers Africa from Guinea-Bissau. Uh, to Central Africa, to different geographical locations on the continent. It is difficult or nearly impossible to put down to chance some examples of obvious phonetic connections. On the contrary, the series reveals a close relationship of relevant languages. These relatively recent through different pronunciations, di, dia, du. De, je, za, et cetera. Imply a single order pronunciation, as in the French nuit, Spanish noche. Um, Italian note, recent forms linked from other form, nocte. We have in uh Pharonic Sashmetu Nacher, ja, which means a type of bread. And Coptic, je, a dish for food. Low-key bread do be a dish for food, just saying. Wait, I skipped a word, where'd it go? So, A, specialized in comparative linguistics. Noted first that uh on the semantic level, there is scarcity. Any evolution, bread, a dish for food to eat, are realities which capture the same field of significance. And recall a daily reality, bread, dish, and eating. But in reality, important point is that we have the same word which was hardly developed phonetically. So ancient um Sashmetu Nacher says. Okay, so it's D Y and then the A, but the A has that like little house on top of it. Um, so, I'm trying to think of like, how do you pronounce that A? Like, how do you accent that? Cuz I feel like I'm about to make it Spanish if I try to say it out loud. Like, that's that's really what I'm sitting here struggling with. Like, don't say Spanish. Don't say French either. But anyway, so, uh, I'm gonna just go for and say, uh, dia. Bochi is de za, teke is de za, fang zi or zi. Coptic is je, Yoruba is je, JJ, spelled three different ways. And the Pharonic mutations are almost self-explanatory. So bule is li, to eat. Vili, kulia, lia, and mb, oliya, or oli. Um, they've got dia lia and di and li. So those are like. so those are like you know different languages this is how it kinda changes but it's kinda same so we can therefore affirm that all these forms are traceable back to same single ancestral phonetic form in other words uh ancient Seshma du nature Coptic and other languages from the continent Africa um are genetically and historically linked Berber is not linked with this African um Egyptian family Berber et to eat simple past tense ichu the Akhan is evidently black African DD to eat Ashanti is uh dzidzi to eat in Fanti the Akhan has simply doubled the simple form D DD to Z and zidzi in Arabic we have akala to eat and afko for food this is uh manifestly different from the forms ja za zhi ji D de dia and lia uh and Li etcetera from black African languages since um Seshma du nature or Rani Kemet after these remarks and general observations we can analyze in a much deeper way the phonetic correspondences on one or two precise examples for there is no space for more ample demonstrations which are quite tedious no way for those who are not specialists in comparative linguistics me he's talking about me I feel so much shade from the ancestor right now but he right he right it it yes so the initial and um medial the same position in frame of uh Seshma du nature and Coptic and in mbuchi therefore the K precedes nasal oh Lord now he gonna he gonna see he just went and did that and then he's like you know what and for those people who are reading this book let me just throw more vocabulary at you like you thought you were struggling ha struggle some more like he definitely wrote this for scholarly level folk cause I'm gonna say wusa so the K sound predicates a nasal oh okay okay got all my little alarm y'all proceeds a nasal bilobilial plosive what is that like legit yeah look at this a nasal what was that movie where they were like English do you speak it that's what I feel like right now oh my gosh I'm sorry I gotta laugh at myself that was just yo and then he keeps using the words like oh my god okay I can't so I don't know what a nasal bilabial plosive means yes all the all the little glasses things like the yeah that that's a that's something to Google cause child so whatever that means AKA we gonna have to Google that one too um it starts with a K and then he says something about an M at the end so I guess it means like when you put into letters together or something feel free to Google it y'all I'm just saying put it in the comments because help us out I'm just saying it would be nice it would be lovely so um in Seshma du nature it would be kem or black in uh Coptic it would be kam kame uh chemi or kem and in bochi is ikama all of them meaning black or to blacken or to become black therefore we have these phonetic altercations at consonant level I'm like where 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 is it I'm like this is what this is what I'm laughing at right here so apparently the KKK and MMM so the continent uh consonantal structure is rigorously the same everywhere the A of Coptic and kam a kam recurs in mbuchi kama V E being the prefix of the infinitive thank you yes thank you thank you for feeling my pain I appreciate that very much thank you for the hearts being a prefix of the infinitive and the final A of ikama only being a supporting vowel therefore Coptic and mbuchi are absolutely identical phonetically so he gives another one K proceeds under unvoiced back veller plosive yeah I feel like this is I'm gonna just be a meme for like some of these words so um darkness cuckoo so it's KKW so so Coptic oh go me look at me figuring stuff out without knowing so Coptic it would be kaké or kiki mbuchi would be and then he wanna go do stuff like this to me why he won't do this oh the the one from earlier nasal bilabial plosive so B I L A B I A L so B I L A B I A L and then the other word is plosive P L O S I V E I think just maybe knowing what a plosive even means would be helpful in general like cause I'm just a regular degular person and I mean I know I'm a teacher but I teach social studies like I don't I'm not ELA I'm not English I'm sorry so sorry but yeah this is the one that I was about to I'm like thinking gonna hit me with this how do you say that E K I don't even know how to pronounce that thing it's like a backwards C with an accent on it I've never seen that sign before so we gonna say uh mbuchi is gonna be kiki too cause I'm a pretend like or e kiki and we gonna leave it at that respectfully this gives these pharaonic correspondences uh all the K's so the three lexemes in fact rest upon identical consonantal base of darkness the evening of the night uh the word being with the determinative which perfectly allows it to speak of darkness of evening darkness and nocturnal darkness uh then he goes see look his he keeps talking about plosives so I was like maybe I missed something as far as what a plosive actually is but yeah cause now he's talking about a K proceeds to unvoiced dental plosives so I guess is it like a plosive is how you pronounce a word maybe or like how you position your mouth to say a word um so small koi or koi small oh that was Coptic that one and in bochi is he see he's doing this thing again I'm gonna say ki cause it's like K with the underline Y and then like a three but with an accent and I'm like when it's transliteration a three is a A sound so I'm like well that can't be the same for this so uh so in Coptic and mbuchi these two consonants TT have disappeared this pha- phenomenon is very constant in Coptic which is from the oh comedic haha oh bilabial is of speech sound formed by closure or near closure of the lips in P B M and W double U okay I'm like you have me with PB and M but W I'm like cause you unless you just go ooh oh with the sound cause it's talking about the sound not saying the letter I'm like that meme okay do I hurt tea cause now okay so now okay so what it sounds like okay now it makes sense okay so the first thing he was talking about with the the K's and the M's so because the M is this billable and it it said nasal so it's like when you say make the M sound like mm it it does vibrate like nasally so okay that's cool proceeds an unvoiced back veller so K yeah that one I'll get back to on that one and then the last one said unvoiced dental plosive okay so the last one makes sense too because it's going from K to a T so then when it's like a T sound it it says unvoiced dental plosive so it's like you're making the sound but you're not really forcing it's more like you're forcing air through your teeth when you're saying like like you don't you don't have to really do much with your voice box uh plosive denoting a consonant that is produced by stopping the airflow of the lips teeth or palate followed by a sudden release of air okay okay so that makes sense with the K sounds cause if you say like you you can't make the K sound without opening your mouth and like air coming through like like the air goes through so okay that makes sense so o- okay ah I curtsy for the win doo ah so alright I'm like oh we are almost done okay so we don't have that much more to go with this specific chapter one two three four more pages of you know just different examples and stuff and then we'll be on the last um the last little bit of the book which is only one two three four like four and a quarter pages so uh we will definitely be finished with this book next week so as I said uh previously uh if you are interested in um just in general continuing the conversation you can always join over on uh Facebook and um comedic living in the twenty-first century and that is where we get together we talk all different kinds of topics and stuff it's a pretty mixed group um some days we have like awesome conversations some days we just share videos um you know Seshma du nature we it's all different kinds of stuff that that's um in that group I think the other thing that I would like to announce actually it's like two so bear with me so the first one is um I have a monthly live that I do uh with a friend of mine her name is Judith she owns a uh crystal metaphysical shop and uh she and I will be talking about the Divine Feminine next week on Wednesday at seven PM Eastern Time so we will be having that uh conversation and uh it's actually part one of a three-part series because we're gonna go from there to talking about other issues um in general so uh for the month of December we're going to do two Wednesdays but usually we uh get together and have a conversation the last Wednesday of every month so next week is the last Wednesday of the month so we're gonna be sitting down and talking and then uh next week even though it is Thanksgiving next week and I know a lot of different people celebrate Thanksgiving mm some people don't so um I am going to play Thursday by ear just because you know I am my mother's only daughter and um I am kind of at her beck and call so if she wants me to stay uh I might be doing that uh but I will definitely announce in my stories um if not but the only thing I'm thinking is I might just change the time but I'm pretty sure I'm still gonna be here just because we usually eat at like one and two o'clock in the afternoon so you know if I push it back a little bit maybe to like seven or eight you know when people are in their food comas you could just you know just listen as you go in and out of sleep so um the other thing that I wanted to announce is that I do still have my aqua job which is like a metaphysical store but it's specifically just for uh comedic practitioners so one of the things I do make uh or do have in my store are like greeting cards so um for Black Friday uh and if you watch my story and follow me on Instagram and you know the in the Facebook group and stuff I will be having a coupon code uh for Black Friday and so between Black Friday and Cyber Monday so if you would like to buy Kwanzaa cards if you would like to buy um uh gosh web and jet cards so that um that's also on the winter solstice if you would like to buy cards for Sekmet or Feast of Sekmet which is um New Year's Eve uh I will have those and then I will also have Mash Haru uh which is pretty much the born day of uh nature Haru um so all of those cards will be up there starting on Black Friday because that's when they're going to launch but there will also be a coupon code so if you want to get any of those holiday cards uh individually or in holiday packs um they will be available on my website so until next week um oh do I curtsy I really do I'm not gonna lie like part of the creative process I just make so much stuff and then I'll have like so much and then by the time I'm like alright I'm gonna do like these few over here so um you know uh so I had some from last year I'm gonna have those up and then I have some new designs also for this year uh for all the different holidays and like I said for Kwanzaa too so if you have people who are not necessarily comedic or maybe they're looking to be comedic but they don't understand the holidays um all of them you know will have some sort of like prayer or you know they're like educational and festive all at the same time so that's what we're going for so until next week uh I hope to see y'all on Wednesday as well as Thursday if I do not get to uh interact with you all I will see you all after the holidays but until then give yourself to nature daily keep yourself a nature daily and may tomorrow be yesterday